Good afternoon and welcome to the June 14, 2023 Comprehensive Plan Amendment Workshop for the Hillsborough County Board of County Commissioners. Before I hand things over to the Planning Commission for introduction overview, can we have the clerk give a roll call?
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Hagan?
Here.
Cameron Cepeda?
Here.
Cullen?
Here.
Kent?
Here.
Myers?
Here.
Owen?
Here.
Wollstill? Commissioner Wollstill? Alright, thank you, Colm.
Alright, thank you. Now I'll pass things over to the Planning Commission.
We can't hear you.
Sorry. Just wanted to say good afternoon Commissioners and turn it over to the planners to walk you through the different plan amendments that we have for briefing this afternoon. Thank you.
Thank you. And if the clerk will register Commissioner Wollstill is present. I just saw him online.
I see him, sir. I've got it notated. Thank you.
Alright, the first one on the agenda is HCCPA 23-05. We have Bryce Feringer will be presenting this one.
Good afternoon, everyone. Let me share my screen. Can everybody see that?
Yes.
Okay. Good afternoon Commissioners, Bryce Feringer, Planning Commission Staff. This is HCCPA 23-05, 10502 Sims Road. This is a privately initiated small-scale map amendment located on approximately 16.89 acres. The proposed request is to change the future land use category of the site from suburban mixed-use six to residential nine. This is a general location map of the April Plan Amendments. The site is located in the south-central portion of Hillsborough County. It's within the limits of the urban service area as well as the limits of the Riverview Community Plan and the South Shore Area-Wide Systems Plan. This is an aerial view of the site. It's located directly north of Sims Road, east of Brussels Boy Lane, and further west of South US Highway 301. Currently, there's a combination of single-family uses and agricultural uses that exist on the subject site. Single-family uses extend to the north, west, and east. There are public institutional uses that are located directly adjacent to the southeast corner of the subject site. Additionally, to the south across Sims Road, there's a church as well as additional single-family uses. The adopted future land use designation of the subject site is suburban mixed-use six. Residential four extends to the west and north of the subject site. Suburban mixed-use six extends to the east, south, and further west. Further east across South US Highway 301 is the residential six future land use category. The proposed amendment would change the future land use designation to residential nine. The proposal would allow for an increase in density as well as a change in the maximum non-residential development potential. Currently, the site's designation of suburban mixed-use six allows for the consideration of up to 101 dwelling units. FAR totals range from 0.25 to 0.50 depending on what the proposed use is. That maximum calculation comes out to about 367,864 square feet. The proposed change would increase the maximum allowable density to 152 units, and it would also introduce urban-scale neighborhood commercial and general commercial uses, those of which would still be subject to commercial locational criteria. Additionally, light industrial uses would no longer be allowed under the residential nine future land use designation. That concludes my presentation, and I would be more than happy to answer any questions.
Hey, great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have any question or comments from board members? I don't see anyone's hand. If not, if we can go to A2.
Yeah, I had something real quick. Chairman, I put my hand up last minute. And you said there on the aerial, there's no res nines. Any, I mean, I didn't see any res nines within striking distance of this property, correct?
No, that is correct. I can go back to that view here. Give me just a moment. Yeah, that's correct. The closest, I guess, similar one is residential four to the west and to the north. SMU six is a little bit more similar just in terms of density. But to answer your question, no, there aren't any other residential nine future land use designations within the, I guess, immediate vicinity of the site.
Okay, that's all I had. Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, didn't appear we have any other hands raised. So HCCPA 2306?
Um, HCCPA 2306. We have Wally Gallart. He'll be presenting this case for you, Wally.
Can everyone see my screen?
I can't see it.
You cannot see your screen?
Yeah, just one moment.
Now we can.
Yep.
Alright, perfect. Alright, good afternoon. My name is Wally Gallart with Planning Commission Staff, presenting on HCCPA 2306, 5135 Madison Avenue. The nature of this request is privately initiated. It is a small-scale amendment. The size is approximately 39.16 acres in size, and the applicant is proposing to go from light industrial to heavy industrial. The subject site is within the urban service area. It is located in the southern portion of unincorporated Hillsborough County and within the limits of the Greater Palm River Community Plan and within the coastal high hazard area. The subject site is south of Madison Avenue, east of US 41, north of West Bloomingdale Avenue, and west of CSX Railroad tracks. Existing uses within the site include vacant, light commercial, and heavy industrial, and the surrounding area to the north is heavy commercial, light commercial, and light industrial, and to the east is agricultural uses. And to the west and south of the site, there are existing light and heavy industrial and vacant uses. The adopted future land use map designation of the subject site is light industrial. It is surrounded by light industrial to the north, east, south, and west, and there's existing heavy industrial future land use categories to the further west and natural preservation further to the south and southwest. The Comprehensive Plan Amendment is seeking to change the future land use map designation from light industrial to heavy industrial. And within both light and heavy industrial future land use categories, no residential uses are permitted, and both allow for a potential maximum consideration of 0.75 for area ratio and 1,279,357 square feet. Based on the information provided above on the slide, the proposed amendment will allow for the same density and intensity. However, it introduces the possibility for heavy industrial uses. Light industrial and heavy industrial allow for the same typical uses. However, open stores does not count towards FAR in the heavy industrial future land use category. This concludes my presentation, and I'll be happy to try and answer any questions.
Alright, thank you. Any questions or comments on 2306? I don't see any. So Commissioner Cap? Commissioner Cap, I think you're muted.
Thank you. Um, you said that it sounded like basically between light and heavy industrial, the only difference is the open storage. Is there anything else besides that?
Um, the typical uses. So heavy industrial allows for more industrial development.
Okay. But it would be the same kind of industrial development that would be allowed in light industrial?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, no problem.
Okay, I don't see any other, any other hands raised. So 2307?
Good afternoon Commissioners. Let me share my screen. Can you all see my screen?
Yes.
Okay, great. This is Jillian Massey with your Planning Commission Staff, and I'll be presenting on HCCPA 23-07, which is Big Bend Road and Triple Creek Boulevard. Some background on this request is that it's a privately initiated small-scale map amendment located on approximately 9.68 acres. And the nature of the request is that they are requesting to change the land use of the site from residential plan two to residential nine. This is a general locator map for the April cycle of proposed plan amendments. 23-07 is located in the southeastern portion of unincorporated county, and it's in the rural area. It's also within the limits of the Riverview and South Shore Area-Wide Systems Community Plans. This is an aerial photo of the site outlined here in pink. It's located on the north side of Big Bend Road and west of Triple Creek Boulevard. Surrounding uses include single-family residential on all sides and a public school to the northeast of the site. This is the adopted future land use map for the subject site. The site is currently vacant and classified as residential land. It's designated as residential plan two, which allows consideration of agriculture, residential, suburban-scale neighborhood, and community commercial, office uses, multipurpose, and clustered mixed-use projects. And non-residential uses are required to meet locational criteria. And this site is completely surrounded by residential plan two. The proposed future land use, this is the proposed future land use map for the subject site, and the proposal is to change the site from residential plan two to residential nine. The residential nine allows for consideration of residential, urban-scale, neighborhood, commercial, office uses, multipurpose projects, and mixed-use developments. And non-residential uses are required to meet locational criteria. This slide outlines the potential impacts from changing the site from residential plan two to residential nine. Currently, only one dwelling unit could be considered at a density of one dwelling unit per five gross acres. The change to residential nine would allow consideration of up to 77 units at a density of nine dwelling units per gross acre. And under the residential plan two, up to approximately 105,000 square feet of non-residential development at a floor area ratio of 0.25 could be considered. And the change to residential nine would allow for approximately 211,000 square feet of non-residential development of a floor, at a floor area ratio of 0.50. Or 175,000 square feet if it were to be developed under one planned development zoning. The proposed amendment would introduce urban-scale neighborhood commercial, whereas currently only suburban scale can be considered. And with that, that concludes our presentation. If you have any questions?
Alright, thank you. Commissioner Wollstill?
Thank you. Thank you, Chair. Did you say that residential nine is also considered a mixed-use zoning?
Non-residential uses can be considered, but they have to meet locational criteria. So typically, the residential nine only allows neighborhoods to be all commercial.
So if this was changed to, um, from res one or two, and then it was moved up to nine, then could it inadvertently, with what I've dealt with a couple times, be subject to density bonuses all of a sudden where it's even more than residential line?
I would say depending on the community plan that it's in. Some of the community plans, you know, have certain restrictions. But yes, so in this case, we're, it's being proposed to change from more of a suburban-scale neighborhood commercial to an urban scale. And what that means is the difference, the difference in this maximum square footage that can be considered if it were to meet locational criteria. But yes, I would say depending on, you know, the site and the circumstances, you know, if this land use were to be changed to residential nine, then not only would they be allowed, you know, just a higher FAR. However, you know, with the locational criteria, they are capped at the 175,000 square feet.
Yeah, just I've been trying to figure out the evolution of how we end up with a bunch of angry constituents and how it ended up that some apartment or something got crammed in there. And this seems like how that life cycle could go. And I'm just curious then, since my biggest concern of hearing that residential nine is mixed use is that we're not currently taking into consideration what the Live Local Act should be doing to our frame of mind on whether or not we approve these things, right? Because we don't know if residential nine is truly considered a mixed use, then that seems like it would put it in jeopardy of being considered by this new Live Local Act according to the current texts that I've read. So that's, that was very surprising and concerning for me to hear. So I appreciate it. Thank you, Chair.
Commissioner Owen?
And this, thank you, Mr. Chairman. This, this address, this is Riverview, correct?
This is Riverview, yes.
It is Riverview because I'm, I got a big, you know, school concurrency issue with middle schoolers as we get towards Big Bend, Apollo Beach, and that area. Do you, are you guys, are we taking that into account on these Land Development Code amendments when we're, you know, increasing a population like this on these higher density? Are, is that part of your consideration too as well during this time? Or is that wrong?
Absolutely, yes. We do ask the Hillsborough County Public Schools to comment on these applications. You know, that will be included in your packet next month for the public hearing and will be considered during our staff evaluation.
Okay, so that hasn't been evaluated at this time?
It's being evaluated right now, and we are currently writing our staff reports for these. But yes, it's definitely something that's taken into consideration, and they are one of the commenting agencies.
Yeah, because, and I'd really, really like to know that. And obviously, I know that that's a part of this, as you're saying. But I can just tell you, we're having some real issues out there in that part of town from that south, that Riverview, Big Bend area out to Apollo Beach, where people are saying there's no place to put my kid from middle school. So, so yeah, alright. Well, that's all, that was all I had. Thank you.
Understood. Thank you.
Alright, thanks. No other questions or comments? 2308?
Okay, that's also me. So I will share my screen again. Okay, can you see my PowerPoint?
Yes.
Okay, great. Again, this is Jillian Massey with your Planning Commission Staff for the record, and I'll be presenting on HCCPA 23-08, Armond Drive and Socker Avenue. Some background on this request is that it's a privately initiated small-scale map amendment. It's located on three folios that total approximately 41.14 acres. And of those three folios, there are three land use designations, public slash quasi-public, residential four, residential six, and the request is to change all three folios to residential nine. Again, this is the general locator map for the April cycle of plan amendments. This particular plan amendment, 23-08, is located in the western portion of unincorporated county, and it's in the urban service area. It's also within the limits of the Town and Country Plan, Town and Country Community Plan, excuse me, and also partially located in the coastal high hazard area. This is the aerial photo of the site outlined here in pink. It's located east of Hanley Road and Armond Drive and located on the, both the north and south side of Socker Avenue. The site is currently vacant, and surrounding uses include single-family residential on all sides and a public school and public park located immediately adjacent to the site. The Veterans Expressway is located east of the site, and there are a few town home, town home and condo developments located to the west of the site. This is the adopted future land use map. Currently, the subject site is made up of three land use designations, as I mentioned previously, residential four, residential six, and public slash quasi-public. It is surrounded by residential four to the north, suburban mixed-use six to the east, and public slash quasi-public and residential six to the south, and residential 20 to the west. This is the proposed future land use map for the subject site, and the proposal is to change all three folios to residential nine. The residential nine designation allows for consideration of residential uses, urban-scale, neighborhood, commercial, office uses, multipurpose projects, and mixed-use developments. And non-residential uses are required to meet locational criteria. This slide outlines the potential impacts from changing the site to residential nine. Currently, the combination of the three land use designations would allow for consideration of up to 193 dwelling units and approximately 450,000 square feet of non-residential development. The change to residential nine would allow for consideration of up to 370 dwelling units and approximately 900,000 square feet of non-residential development. And there would be limitations if all three folios were to be developed under one planned development zoning. And the proposed amendment would introduce urban-scale neighborhood commercial, whereas currently only suburban scale could be considered. And that concludes my summary. If you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer.
Alright, thank you. Any questions or comments? Okay, 2309?
Good afternoon Commissioners. Go ahead and share my screen with you all. So, good afternoon Commissioners. My name is Bryn Dolphane. I'm with the Planning Commission Staff. I'm here to discuss HCCPA 23-09, 1005 North Kingsway Road. This is a privately initiated small-scale amendment for one parcel located on 14.47 acres. The applicant is requesting to go from residential four to residential nine. As you can see, it is in the eastern side of the county. The site is located within the Sefner Mango Community Plan as well as within the urban service area. Here you can see the amendment site is in the northeast quadrant of the intersection of East Highway, East US Highway 92 and North Kingsway Road. Directly to the west across North Kingsway Road is Burnett Middle School. So the north of the school is Higginbotham Park, and to the south are some light commercial uses. Further in the northwest corner, you'll find Interstate four. The amendment site is currently vacant and surrounded by residential uses to the northeast and south. Currently, the site is designated as residential four with public slash quasi-public to the west, residential one in the north, and other residential four designations surrounding it. This is a wider view. I wanted to show you all how close it is to the boundary of the urban service line, which is that blue line that you see there. Beyond the boundary, you'll find some agricultural estate uses as well. The applicant is requesting to change the site to the residential nine designation. The existing residential four category allows for up to 57 dwelling units. There is a small scriptener's error on page two of the briefing report that I wanted to let you guys know about. The report incorrectly lists 97 dwelling units under the residential four category, but the correct number is actually 57. Staff will ensure that this is corrected when you receive the amendment reports next month. Under residential four, suburban-scale non-residential uses such as neighborhood, commercial, office, or mixed-use projects are permitted. Under residential nine, up to 130 dwelling units would be permitted, increasing both density and intensity. This designation would also introduce urban-scale uses, though all non-residential development that exceeds a .35 floor area ratio must be set aside for office or residential support uses. That concludes my presentation. I am available for any questions.
Alright, thank you. Board members, any questions or comments? Seeing none. 2310?
Previous slide, please. This is HCCPA 23-10. It's also known as 17438 Dorman Road. Next slide? This is a privately initiated small-scale comprehensive plan map amendment on 4.2 acres in size. The, the general request for it is going from residential to future land use category to residential four. Next slide, please. The property is located in northern Hillsborough County within the East Lake Orient Park Community Plan, and it's within the Tampa Service Area. Look side, please. This is aerial of the subject site. You'll see that the property is, let's see here. One second. The property is located in the Fish Hawk Community to the west. It also is, there is a large utility easement to the east. There are agricultural lands to the north and northeast and further east, as you can see on the screen. The Fish Hawk Community over to the west of the subject site does have quite a bit of clustered density. So you'll see that on the screen that you can see different lot sizes associated with that. Now, for clarification purposes, because I was reading the wrong set of notes, just to note that this property is located in southern Hillsborough County. It's within the South Shore Area-Wise Community Plan and within the urban service area. Sorry, I was reading the notes from the other plan amendment. Now, next slide, please, if you don't mind. Thank you. So the adopted future land use category is two dwelling units an acre. It does produce about 0.25 floor area ratio. It has, again, it allows typical uses such as suburban-scale neighborhood commercial, office uses, multipurpose projects. Now, next slide, please. Under the proposed future land use category, residential four, it'll give you four dwelling units an acre, 0.2 floor area ratio, and it allows for the same type of uses, suburban-scale neighborhood commercial, office uses, et cetera. Overall, within the vicinity, you have approximately three future land use categories. So you have the residential plan two category, which is the majority of the Fish Hawk Community that you'll see. Then you have over, you know, under the existing future land use category, and over to the east side, you'll see that it starts to become residential two. And then just past Boyett, you do see some residential ones. So as you can see on the screen, you'll start to decrease the density further east you go. Next slide, please. Now, under the proposed, or under the existing, you'll get up to eight dwelling units or 45,000 square feet of non-residential use. Now, under the proposed, you're going to get 16 dwelling units max or 45,000 square feet of non-residential use. The only thing that changes here is the density. So the density basically doubles, but again, the maximum that they can build on that piece of property due to the acreage, et cetera, is 16 dwelling units. Other than that, next slide, please. I will go ahead and answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Commissioner Owen?
I think, Mr. Chairman. You said the South Shore Community Plan, that can't be right, right? Is that right?
Yeah, so if you, HTV, do you mind going back to the, the general location map, which is slide two, I believe? Or slide three? Slide three, that one. There you go. So yes, the plan amendment is located within the South Shore Area-Wide Systems within the urban service area. So you'll see it's like right on the edge of that urban service boundary.
Oh, wow, I didn't know that. So can you pull that map up that showed kind of the density in the area? The, I'm trying to think to the...
The proposed future land use?
To the, yeah, that's perfect. To the west of Boyett, I'm trying to get my bearings here. Channing, is that Channing Park would be to the west? I see all the development Palmetto Club and all that area, which is Fish Hawk Ranch, correct? That's all.
Yeah, HTV, do you mind going to the proposed future land use map? Which is like two slides. That one's good. You can stop on that one if you want. Thank you. So yes, the Fish Hawk Community is all that light yellow color that you see. It's quite large, and you have all these different types of densities. The reason why they clustered, it's because they're, you know, you've got to protect environmental sensitive areas. So they typically cluster development. They do have a large town center, so that, that's a massive development here in Hillsborough County. Now, over to where the subject site is. Um, now, over to where the subject site is, that's more of the residential two. So you'll see, um, slightly, um, a little bit, you know, similar, uh, I guess, uh, density-wise, because you'll see the very tiny lots down to the, to the south, where you see Bright Wheat Drive. You have smaller lots.
That's about to go, is that Channing Park in the brighter yellow?
I would have to double-check on the aerial, um, and in my notes, but I will definitely note that and put that in the staff report for you.
Yeah, because I know Channing Park is not a part of Fish Hawk Ranch, and everybody thinks it is. And that, that, that box there looks like it's right, um. You know, Dorman Road's a tough road. When you, when you go, when you're heading, uh, east, it's a one-and-a-half-lane road, Dorman Road. It's one-and-a-half lanes. So, um, extremely dangerous intersection too as well, which we made a four-way stop. So I, I just, um, I'll look forward to, um, to when you bring the report, and I'll, I'll look into it a little more myself. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thanks. I don't see any other, uh, you know, the hands raised, so twenty-three eleven?
Good afternoon. Uh, let me just bring up my slides. Good afternoon again, Commissioners. My name is Sophia Garantiva, Planning Commission staff, here to present on HCCPA twenty-three dash eleven, fifteen nine oh eight West Lake Drive. This is a privately initiated small-scale map amendment consisting of three parcels totaling approximately twenty acres. Uh, the applicant is requesting to go from a split future land use of Wyomama Village Residential Two, WVR two, and residential four, res four, to residential four entirely. Uh, the site is located in the southern area of the county, north of the intersection of State Road, uh, six seventy-four and West Lake Drive, uh, within the urban service area. It is also within the Wyomama Village Community Plan. The aerial photograph here shows the site outlined in pink on the east side of West Lake Drive. The site is surrounded by agricultural to the east and west, uh, single-family to the north and west. Uh, there's currently a single-family home and mobile home on the, the two southern parcels, and on the northern, uh, most, uh, parcel, it's vacant. As previously mentioned, uh, the adopted future land use of this site is split between res four and WVR two. Uh, res four allows for the density of four dwelling units to the acre in suburban-scale neighborhood, commercial, office uses, and multipurpose projects. WVR two allows for one dwelling unit per five acres with the consideration of up to two dwelling units per acre. Agriculture and residential support uses may also be considered. Both allow up to a point two-five floor area ratio unless otherwise limited by specific policies. And some additional background on the proposed amendment. Uh, in two thousand and seven, the urban service, uh, area boundary was expanded, uh, and these parcels were brought into the urban service area. At that time, the future land use designation was not changed, and the property owners were later given the option to decide whether, uh, which future land use, um, they wanted to change it to. So the property owners are now exercising that option with this request. And as such, the property owner is requesting, uh, again, the future land use designation of res four for the entirety of the property, uh, as shown on the map. The proposed amendment would be an increase in residential development potential from fourteen dwelling units up to eighty dwelling units, with the maximum commercial intensity remaining the same at approximately, uh, two hundred and eighteen thousand square feet. Uh, that concludes my presentation, and I'm available for any questions.
All right, thank you. Uh, questions, comments? All right, if not, uh, last item, please?
Charlie Oss, with Planning Commission staff. So this is HCCPA twenty-three dash twelve. It's, uh, also known as seventy thirty-five Temple Terrace Highway. Next slide, please. The request is basically going from residential nine to residential twenty future land use category. This is a, um, privately initiated small-scale, um, comprehensive plan map amendment. The subject site is approximately thirteen point two acres in size. Next slide, please. The general location, this one is in northern Hillsborough County and within the East Lake Community Plan, um, and it's also within the Tampa service area. Next slide? Now, according to this aerial, the subject site has, um, it's within proximity to the Hillsborough River, as you can see on the screen, up to the northwest area. You do have the Florida Ca- uh, College Academy campus, uh, which is located north of that river. Um, there's like a small mass of buildings there, you see. And then directly north of the, of the property is another, I get, I think it's another extension of that, uh, of that campus, because it said Florida College Academy on it. Um, now, to the, um, there is a gas station and some general commercial uses to the east, um, and northeast. You do have an office to the west of the subject site, and there's multifamily residential to directly to the south. Um, the piece that they are actually modifying is the, the segment right up at the front where it's vacant. That's the segment that they're, um, intending to develop with more, um, additional multifamily units. Next slide, please. The adopted future land use category is residential nine. Um, it does give you up to nine dwelling units an acre or zero point five zero FAR. Um, typical uses in it include, you know, residential, uh, suburb, uh, urban-scale neighborhood, commercial, office uses, multipurpose projects, even mixed-use development. Next slide, please. They are requesting to go to res twenty, so res twenty gives you twenty, uh, twenty dwelling units an acre or zero point seventy-five FAR. They do allow for the same typical uses, nothing changed in the typical uses. Now, as you can see on the screen, that the general area is composed of two jur- jurisdictions. You have the unincorporated side, and then you have the Temple Terrace jurisdiction. Under unincorporated, you're gonna see, uh, residential nine and residential twenty future land use categories. But in the Temple Terrace jurisdiction, you do have, uh, quite a variety. You have some commercial, some residential eighteen, uh, public natural preservation, office institutional, residential four, residential nine, and then some, um, public semi-public future land use categories. Overall, the maximum density, um, that's seen readily in the area is residential eighteen, which is eighteen dwelling units an acre. Um, on the unincorporated side, the max that you see is residential twelve, which is twelve dwelling units an acre. Next slide, please. Under the existing, um, it yields a maximum of a hundred and eighteen dwelling units or, uh, two hundred and eighty, uh, seven thousand square feet of non-residential approximately. Now, under the potential, um, you'll see that it can obtain up to two hundred and sixty-four dwelling units or four hundred and thirty-one thousand square feet of non-residential. Now, the, overall, the proposed amendment does allow for additional density and intensity, but there is a small notation for the, um, for the non-residential portion. Uh, non-residential portion does differentiate between, um, office support or office uses, uh, versus general retail. Um, typically, general retail is capped, uh, depending on commercial locational criteria. That gets reviewed at the rezoning stage, so we won't know that for sure. But at least for now, um, they have stated, um, in their request that they were asking for a potential for multifamily, and that's as far as, um, we, we understand. Now, they, there might be a consideration for later down the road. Um, I'm not sure if they've submitted a rezoning application or not, but that's, that's always something that the board can, um, say if they would like to see it concurrent as well. So it, that is, um, completely up to you, but I am here if you have any questions, so.
All right, thank you. Uh, any questions or comments from twenty-three dash twelve? I have one comment. It's a general comment for staff, but it also piggybacks on what, uh, Carla just stated. I'm not sure about twenty-three dash twelve, the one we just heard, but it is my understanding that several of the, um, amendments that we've heard today also have rezoning applications pending. And I would just like to, um, I guess, remind staff that when faced with situations where comp plan amendment and corresponding rezoning are filed, that in the past, uh, the board has wanted, uh, them to run concurrently, uh, for the sake of efficiency, consistency. Um, it is far more productive, and I think it provides more specificity if we can deal with all pending matters, uh, relating to the same parcel at the same time. So that's been the, the position of the board in the past, unless there are any objections to that. I would ask that staff, you know, apply that same, uh, principle with, with the ones that we have here that have pending rezonings. Um, any other questions or comments from board members?
I, I agree with what you just said.
Okay, oh, thank you, Commissioner Cohen. Um, no other comments? Uh, we're adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.